Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to call the Castle Hills Regular City Council Meeting into order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Judge McCall, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To this Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Judge. Okay, first up, we have a recognition for Mr. Francisco Garcia, who's Central Catholic High School's 2021 valedictorian. I think we can all agree that I think we can all agree that high school is challenging, with COVID even more challenging, and graduating valedictorian is an even bigger accomplishment. So on behalf of the city, we wanted to present you with this plaque that I'll come down there and give you, but congratulations on your hard work. We look forward to seeing what your college career brings for you. Okay, we will proceed on to the induction of the deputy court clerk. Judge McCall.
Hello, counsel. How are you doing tonight? I want to introduce our new deputy clerk clerk. Her name's Alma Butcher. She worked for the city of Del Rio for about 10 years before coming to Castle Hills. She worked in the administrative department, and then she assisted the city attorney, and then she worked in municipal court there. We added her to our team on June 1st, and she's been a great addition to the team. I just wanted you guys to meet her, and if you want to ask her any questions, you can. That's Alma Butcher.
Ms. Butcher.
I'd like to be part of this team.
We're excited to have you. Thank you, Judge. Do we have anybody signed up for non-agenda items? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Consent agenda. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda with some some errors corrected in section 6.2 of the June 8th council meeting. I'm more than willing to just hand them over for those corrections.
Are these just grammar?
Grammar.
Nothing factual, right?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. We have a motion by Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Paul on favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Up next, we have item 6.1, a public hearing on an application from HNF Management LLC for a special use permit for the property located at 8055 West Avenue, CB 5778 Lot 15, except SEIRR 48.1556 feet, slimp subdivision for a process proposed bar with food in accordance with section 50-347 of the city zoning ordinances, which states that a special use permit shall be required for any use in the G District other than a use listed in Article 3 of City Zoning Ordinance. It is 6:36, and we will open the public hearing. We don't have anybody to speak. We will close the public hearing at 6:36. Proceed on item 6.2, discussion of possible action on ordinance number 2021-07-13. Recommendation from the zoning commission on an application on the request for a special use permit from HNF Management LLC for a property located at 8055 West Avenue, CB 5778 Lot 15, except SEIRR 48.56 feet, slimp subdivision for a proposed bar with food in accordance with section 50-347 of the city zoning ordinances, which states a special use permit shall be required for any use in the G District other than a use intended in Article 3 of the city zoning ordinances. We have our zoning chairman, Mr. Juan Solis.
Mayor and council, as a proud graduate of Central Catholic, again, congratulations to the guy over here. We continue the leadership in this city. Mayor and council, when you look at this consideration, we were able to look at recommending approval. We went through the history of the organization. It is an organization that is basically operating downtown, moving to Castle Hills. It's a unique opportunity. As you look at the evolution of Castle Hills, these are the type of organizations you want to attract and to be able to be successful here in our community. The zoning commissioner reviewed all aspects of it, the SUP that was requested, and made a final recommendation unanimously to bring it to you all. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any questions?
Yes, I just have one question. This has probably generated the most positive feedback in my year and a half on council, and it seems wildly popular. Were there any citizens that came forward during the zoning commission meetings to express an opinion one way or another?
Yes, there were several that came in favor of it. There were actually three that came and spoke in favor of it. Again, talking about the quality, talking about the different level of what was being brought to our community, and therefore also the location was key. It wasn't somewhere where it was going to cause other trouble or perhaps infringe on the neighborhoods in terms of parking or evening activities. So it was perfectly located. The location is perfect, the former Starbucks office, I mean, building. And so it kind of meshed perfectly, which is probably why you got all the positive feedback that you did.
No doubt. Thank you.
Correct.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just for purposes, the applicant was at the zoning commission and answered all questions. A copy of his business plan is in the backup, and particular questions you have to the business plan or the permitting process, Mr. Zamiron has been working closely with them and can answer any questions you have on them opening this establishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Thank you, Mrs. Solis. Thank you.
May.
Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 2021-07-13 regarding special use permit for F&amp;H Management as notated in the agenda item. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Thank you, Mr. May, with a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Soho, welcome to Castle Hills. Next up, we have item 6.3, a discussion of possible action on resolution 2020-07-13, authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Castle Hills and San Antonio Water System to facilitate Castle Hills improvements of streets and infrastructure, and authorizing the city manager to execute such an agreement. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. This is obviously the second ILA we will partner with SAWs with for the Banyan project. Part of the sewer location, I believe, and Mr. Quayar is here can answer any questions pertaining to the project, which is later on the agenda for an award, but there's a portion of SAWs work that needs to be done as far as sewer adjustments, and this is their portion of funding the project, advanced funding again from SAWs. And Mr. Henry reviewed the ILA for us and worked with the SAWs legal team on this, and so it was ready to go and be presented in an effort because we will obviously be taking action on awarding the project later in the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Joyce.
I move that we approve resolution number 2020-07-13, authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Castle Hills and SAWs as otherwise notated in item 6.3.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
A point of clarification, if I can, Mayor. This is, this is a resolution 2020. Should this be 2021-07-13?
I believe so, Mr. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. I'm assuming, Mr. Joyce.
Okay, let me just modify that then to resolution number 2021-07-13, as previously stated.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Gregory, is your, okay, do we have discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have discussion of possible action on an award for a construction contract for the construction of Banyan to Carrollwood Phase 2 underwater shed 3. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the award of the project for the second phase of the watershed 3 drainage projects with Carrollwood Drive to Banyan Drive. We had, I believe, six bids, and the lowest bid, which was, I believe, 1.8, which involves the base bid and the alternate one included, which is below the $2 million, which was carved out of our certificates of obligation for this particular project, came in below the engineering costs and below the money that was borrowed for the project itself. Mr. Quayar and Mr. Benavides are here to speak on the particulars of the project as far as what the next steps are with awarding this construction contract, and then construction schedule, and anything related to the project they can provide to you all.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. And before we get to that, I just wanted to add that I received a mail-in comment from Mr. Elzinga, basically strongly encouraging city council to approve the next phase of this drainage construction project, stating that the first phase has helped out substantially and that the additional work would help. Mr. Elzinga, thank you so much for submitting that. Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Quayar and company? Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor.
Mr. Joyce.
I'll move that we authorize the city manager to enter a contract, excuse me, item 6.4. Yes, that we award the contractor construction to De Plata Construction Company, Phase 2 underwater shed 3.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Can we restate that to make sure that the funds are originated out of the 2020 certificates of obligation for the project?
Sure, I will amend that to add that the funds will be taken from the certificates of obligation from 2020.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Gregory. Do we have a discussion? Mr. Paul. Mr. Quayar, Mr. Paul has a question for you. If you wouldn't mind turning your microphone on. Mr. Paul.
I saw him out there just anxious to hear from me. I'm going to ask the obvious. We don't go just for the lowest bid. We go for people that we also know that they have the quality of the work that we need, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're in charge of, I mean, you're the overseer. You're kind of the watchdog, if you will.
That's correct.
Okay, so if we run into an issue, we need to come to our watchdog. I just want to make sure, because too many people end up with just going for the lowest bid.
That's correct. And what we did, Councilman, as we've done on previous projects, is we have included in the bid proposal for the contractor to submit a list of similar projects and references that we check, and I think you'll find that in your package. There was some references that we did call. In addition to that, I did make some other personal phone calls to contacts that I have with the city of San Antonio, as well as they're working on a project for us for Bear County, a different one, a subdivision reconstruction project. So we, we did that. Yes, sir, we covered to ensure that they are qualified to do this job, and everything we've heard, they're, they're responsible contractor.
Thank you, sir.
And Councilman Paul, just as we've done with the antler in this last Banyan project, we will have our engineers do the quality control of the project as well.
Perfect. And Mr. Quayar, you're confident with De Plata's past performance history?
You know, as much as I would with any of the three or four low bidders that we had. They're all, you know, well-known here in the San Antonio area. They do work for this area, and they're, they have a, you know, pretty strong working history. So as I said, I have a personal, not personal, but firsthand experience working with them on another Bear County project, and Corey was a project manager, and they've done, they've done a good job. The county's been satisfied with them as I have these other references. So, so yeah, I'm confident that they'll, that they'll show up and do a good job.
Perfect. And can you let counsel know, Mr. Quayar, the need to do the alternate one, too, which comes within the proposed bid and project cost itself? Why the importance of doing that one?
Yes, sir. So we did recommend, because of the available funds that we do include that alternate one, which is included in the motion that the councilman made for the total construction cost, I think was a little north of 1.638 million, but, but I think it is, it is worthwhile to, to extend those project limits north of the intersection to just really help alleviate and minimize potential flooding in that area.
I think counsel, as we go past with the alt 1, this takes us past the Banyan-Carrollwood intersection, correct? To put two culverts to capture the water instantly when it comes down to the end of Carrollwood, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, counsel. Any further questions? Mr. Joyce.
Does my recommendation need to be updated to reflect the alternate 1? The motion, does that need to be, is it okay the way it is, you think? Because I didn't specifically mention alternate 1. I don't know if that matters or not.
Mr. Schnall.
Mr. Rappley, I want to look at the wording in the resolution that accompanied this item. I'm looking through the packet for that now. Was there a resolution on this?
There was a motion, and if y'all don't mind, I'll just, I'll just.
There's a motion. Yeah, Mr. Joyce, I would ask that you amend your motion with Mr. Gregory's permission to, to state that the contract and the award of the contract to De Plata is for the, the base bid plus alternates 1 and 2?
It's actually just one alternate.
Just one, yeah, okay.
Alternate 1.
I amend my motion to state that I move the award, that we award the construction contract for construction between Banyan to Carrollwood to De Plata to include alternate 1, Phase 2 underwater shed 3.
With funding from the CFO 2020.
With funding from the certificates of obligation from 2020.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further questions, Mr. Gregory, you're good with that. I just want to take a quick moment of privilege and realize that this is quite a momentous occasion because this drainage issue has been plaguing the city of Castle Hills for the better part of 10 years. And so we're making, yet again, more progress towards that, and I just wanted to thank you all for your leadership in getting us to this point, and Mr. Rappley as well. That being said, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Quayar.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next up, we have a discussion and possible action to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Intermountain Slurry Seal to perform street maintenance work as part of the city of Castle Hill Street Maintenance Program, and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, we did similar, we entered into a similar contract with Intermountain Slurry last year to do the micro-surfacing of 10 streets. And I think they did a great job. Originally, when we developed the street maintenance program, and I can, again, Mr. Quayar can concur or agree from that standpoint, but we had listed about 30 streets that we were going to do, and we were able to get 10 done last year. And this year, I think we've outlined, I believe, 17 or 18. And this is obviously, the price is the same as Bear County and city of San Antonio are getting because we are on the interlocal with them, and so I believe the total for doing the micro-surfacing of the 17, 18 streets is about 317,000, which I believe in the budget, we programmed or targeted about 400,000 in maintenance for our streets. And the idea is that if we award the contract to them tonight, that they're trying to be here by the end of July or early August to complete all these streets.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel.
Mayor. Mr. Paul, Jeff, go ahead.
Mr. Isbrand, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was going to move that we authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Intermountain Slurry Seal for the street maintenance work as outlined in the agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. We have a second. Mr. Gregory and Mr. Paul, you had a question? Turning your microphone on.
Too used to being on Zoom. Since I've been traveling as much as I have, I've missed the streets somewhere here on the slurry side. I wanted to be sure that included in that are the two or three streets that we missed before in the estates, so that we can finish that project over there. Now, let me also say, I don't live in the estate, so. But it's just that it needs to be completed. Do we have the rest of them in here?
I did speak with the contractor who said that they would, you know, with the streets here, that they would try to get back and do that. It was one intersection, actually, that was missed because there were sections of concrete that they didn't do, I think, on Oak Royal that was.
And we missed a couple of streets, too. That's a.
I'm not sure which ones were missed. I know an intersection wouldn't get, did not get completed because it needed some base repairs and mill and overlay.
I was thinking of Lou John, Cass Hills.
They're included in this one now.
Okay, that's where I want to go, because as I say, we need to finish the package and wrap it up.
And for historical, Councilman Paul, when we did this last year, I think it was right before the meeting you were appointed to, we did not have the funding to include those streets at the time.
Right, I remember.
But, but now we do, so this is why we're trying to get at least 17 or 18 done now. Cass Hills, Lou John in that area, and that other section of Lou John, I believe, from Lock Haven to Cass Hills will be included as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Joyce.
I just have a comment or two, if I may. At the risk of micromanaging, I would really, I'm, I live in the estate, so we had the benefit of the beautiful job that those folks did last year, and it really, it was a very nice improvement. But there are a couple of QC things, quality control things, that I'd like to ask the folks to look at, and I'm not sure if that's a Ryan Rappley question, or a Mr. Quayar question, or who to address that to. Maybe it's just a contractor question, but anyway, it seemed to me that there were a couple areas where drainage was impacted, that is to say, slowed down a bit. And then also, at this time, I know at the corner of my street and Oak Royal, there's a lot of sandy stuff or gravelly stuff that's kind of accumulated, and I see that's addressed in this contract, but it sounds like that's something that's the city's responsibility. So my request is that if the city doesn't have the means to take care of that, since we have a little, seem to have a little bit of money left over, maybe we could put that back to these guys and have them come back two weeks or two months later, whatever the interval is, and clean up all of that loose aggregate that breaks loose after a little bit of time. And so anyway, that's, that's my comment. I'm in favor of the motion, but I would just amend, if the folks are amenable, that we do a little bit more quality control with respect to those issues. Thank you.
Mr. Gregory.
I hope the council will consider that interest rates have stayed down at much to the chagrin of a lot of people who didn't think they would. And we we might consider for the end of this year borrowing more money because a 30-year bond is hit one and a quarter. A couple of days ago, it's back to 140 now. If we get the inflation that a lot of people are predicting, the window is closing quickly. We might be able to borrow another $5 or $10 billion and finish off any other things that seem to be major that need to be addressed, just to be considered at the end of this motion for next council agenda. Or soon.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Mayor, counsel, I'd recommend that if there's some discussion about that, that we engage, again, our, our financial advisors, because they're probably the best equipped to let us know if there's a next step on that possibility and what that outlook might look like, again, for, for borrowing in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Okay, any further questions, comments? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Up next, we have discussion of possible action ordinance number 2021-07-13-A, amending the city of Castle Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, related to sanitation collection services conducted by Public Works. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, last meeting, we had a presentation regarding some regulations we were trying to put in place with our sanitation collections. We discussed certain areas related to curbside recycle, and then again, placement of containers and size. And so in your packet there, you have the ordinance, which has been developed and outlined by Mr. Zamiron and reviewed and had further input by Mr. Schnall and Mr. Fletcher, and I believe that's the document that's in your packet, and I think it has red line as well, so you can see the changes from that standpoint. And, you know, from, from staff's perspective and our public works director, that this is something that we needed to do to make sure that we do have rules and regulations with sanitation collections, because previously, you know, we didn't have the ability to enforce those.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand.
May I ask a question related to this? Mr. Rappley, in section 36-32 pertaining to brush, subsection D, the addition or other suitable container has, is in, has been put into that. I'd like to know what the definition is or who defines what a suitable container is, because I think we have issues now with subjectivity about what gets picked up and doesn't get picked up. So what, what, how do we define what a suitable container is or convey to the community what one is so that they can be compliant with this?
Sure. I'd ask Mr. Harada if he wanted to comment on that. As far as a 32-gallon, I assume that that would be that size container for brush collection. Rick, I didn't know if you had any other comments related to that? None? Okay. I've asked Mr. Schnall why the language "other suitable container" was in place, or?
I'm certainly glad to comment because I'm responsible for that phrase, Mr. Rappley and Mr. Isbrand. I spoke to Mr. Zamiron about this and, and explained to him that it is impractical for someone to put brush or trimmings in, in even a heavy-duty plat lawn bag under most conditions because the brush is often too big at four feet in length or has other branches sticking out of it that even a heavy-duty garbage bag would not be appropriate. And suggested to Mr. Zamiron, and he agreed, that we would add the phrase "or other suitable container." As far as the definition is concerned, that will be, I think, in the discretion of our public works director. I think this is designed to provide some guidance to the community, and perhaps Mr. Harada can give some examples of suitable containers that could be published in the next city newsletter under his byline when he explains, or someone explains, and it would be Mr. Harada, probably, and informs the community of these new rules. But the concern was that by just limiting it to plastic bags, didn't, did not seem practical for brush or, or trimmings, whether there are small tree trimmings or brush or trimmings from, from cutting down some shrubs.
I appreciate that, and thank you for the, the input on it, Mr. Schnall. My only apprehension about it, and certainly wouldn't be anything that would prevent me from supporting this, is that it does leave open subjectivity, and I think that's already an issue that we hear about from residents about what's getting picked up, what isn't, what's suitable, what's not. And to Mr. Schnall's point there, I think that it's imperative, and we've talked about this before related to trash and brush, that we focus efforts on educating people, not simply on enforcing or declining to pick things up, because we have determined subjectively that something is or isn't suitable. So I hope that along with this goes the education component.
I think Councilman Isbrand, I think that's part of the, the message we wanted to, at least I think I conveyed last meeting when we did a presentation, to actually have rules and regulations in place, and then send out information that actually informs our residents on the, sort of the do's and don'ts from, from that standpoint, because I don't think that's ever. from, from that standpoint, because I don't think that's ever happened either. Again, like I mentioned the last meeting, I think that there's been sort of this loose policy that Mr. Harada has been following, but there's been nothing, you know, set in stone and concrete in our code for us to enforce. But I think in any case we wanted to do was education first before we enforce.
I, I appreciate that. And with that said, I'd move approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash oh seven dash thirteen A, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter Thirty-Six, as noted.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a second? Mr. May, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further discussion?
And real quick, Mayor, as, as we did with the, I think the flyers that we sent out for the holiday schedule, as we move forward, I think that we will send out a similar type of brochure and our postcard, letting people know first and foremost what is now the rules related to sanitation collection.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. And next we have update from the Emergency Management Committee. Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor and council, in a pre, earlier city council meeting this year after our February winter freeze, you established this Emergency Management Committee and appointed Mr. Gregory and myself to it to assess what the city's response was to evaluate potential issues, needs going forward. What Mr. Rapley is handing out to you at this point is just a brief summary of the action that we've taken so far. And while he's doing that, I'll say that I appreciate the fact that we've met, I think every month, if not more than once a month, and a couple of occasions to discuss this. The mayor has joined us on this and I appreciate his participation as well as the fire chief, who is our Emergency Management Coordinator. His input has been invaluable, along with the police chief, Ms. Tedford and others. So first of all, thank you to the city staff for their, your participation in this. I'm certainly not going to read through the whole thing here, but the, the intention here was in the aftermath of the February freeze to assess, do we have the proper resources in place? Are we prepared to respond to any type of other situation of this type of magnitude that might come along? And if we see areas where we don't feel we're fully prepared, how can we close that gap, even if we can't fully close that gap? So what we did was assess the response to the actual freeze, then to look at the city's overall policy, and then to try to anticipate with the participation of the department, the department heads, what longer-term needs may be. So we kind of focused this on three things where we've gotten to at this point. The first thing that we identified that I think is probably the most critical element is that our emergency management plan, which we're required to have, has not been updated in several years. I bring, we bring this up not as a criticism of anything, but because this, this was a tremendous reminder and opportunity for us to use a scenario that we might not otherwise have thought of before to look at, is our emergency operations plan fully developed, refreshed as it needs to be? The emergency operations plan does everything from defining who is in charge of doing what, who is in charge of calling whom in terms of resources we need, how the inter-local agreements that we have, et cetera, et cetera. So the, the first thing that we identified here that we believe is the imperative to any action that we take going forward is to update the emergency operations plan. And that is a work that Chief Ladwig already has in progress, Mr. Rapley already has in progress. I think that will be really significant for us as we go forward, whether it's this council or any future council. This is the roadmap on how the city should respond in the event of some type of emergency. That was step number one that we took was defining that and working on that. The second thing that we did was then take a look at the experiences that we went through during the February freeze and what we identified as what we will call immediate needs in order to close the gap on any vulnerabilities that we had there. You'll note that the next agenda item after this is related to the purchase of a generator, which we believe is absolutely imperative and we cannot risk a minute of the day, if you, further if you ask me, of not having the resources in place to continue to operate City Hall, both in terms of city response, police dispatch, and potentially as a sheltering location or warming or heating station for our residents. So that was an imperative, we thought that immediately required the council to address. And then thirdly is our longer-range plan, which is working with the department, the department heads to map out, if you will, a five-year plan. We know that there are capital needs that are required here. It's not just who do you call at the Red Cross, who do we call at Bear County, who do we call whenever to get whatever resources are available? But also what will our long-term needs to ensure that the city is as ready as it possibly can be in the event of any type of disaster or emergency situation going forward? We're not going to bring to you tonight any of that longer-term view except to tell you that that's the work that this committee will continue to do is to map out, if you will, a five-year plan of identifying where needs are and if purchases are associated with them, how you apply that to our budget cycle as well. So in, in short, that's at least my, my assessment of it, of the action that we've taken. I defer to Mr. Gregory, Mr. Rapley, and certainly Chief Ladwig if, if they would like to add anything or if you have other comments on it.
Councilman, as far as the presentation that I handed out, and I know that Mr. Isbrand reviewed, we just wanted to elaborate, which the chief can, on obviously what the importance of the emergency plan, what those annexes are supposed to do and why we sort of need to be prepared in the event of something related to an emergency management situation. But I'll turn it over to Councilman Gregory, who was equally involved. Thanks, sir.
This is something I believe that should be brought over to the council every autumn, every year, to refresh the council as to what the plan actually says. We went year, I didn't even know there was a plan, or if it was, it was so far back I didn't remember it. And, but now we have something substantial. And all council members, I think, should be, and the mayor should be appraised of it every autumn. That in case you have new members, in case you want to update it on something, in case you want to see something done that hasn't been done before. The interesting thing here is the person who calls the warning is the fire chief. He's the point man in starting the ball rolling apparently on all this. And I'm sure he'll set up a, an immediate way to contact everybody else immediately. But it's important thing we have the fire chief do this because that's how these things are set up. I'm glad we have this now. I want to thank the mayor for his input because he brought some insights that I don't think anybody had thought of. And I appreciated them being brought before the committee. I hope the council takes the time to look at it and get familiar with it, and hopefully we'll never have to use it again.
Mayor, council, the other document I handed out that says Castle Hill's Emergency Management Plan is kind of prelude to updating the plan explanation with an overview and a description of the annexes itself. So that'll accompany the updated plan once Chief Ladwig is done with it.
So what, what we should look forward to next from the committee and from chief will be an update of the emergency operations plan, which will be a nice binder or binders. It depends on how big the annexes are. And I think you'll see at that point the detail by which the city goes into thinking about every aspect of this. And I, I think you'll feel very comfortable with that when you see it. Again, the next agenda item speaks to an imperative that we really feel that we need to address now. And then as we go forward, again, to look at the needs that the city will have, align them to our budget and be able to build a roadmap over several years so that this remains top of mind and we continue to make the progress that we need to.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand and Mr. Gregory. I think this is just like almost anything else in city government, it's a living document and it's important that we look at it, review it and remind ourselves of what's in there as our seats change and as time goes on and our, our needs change. So thank you all for the work that you've done. Thank you, chief and Mr. Rapley. We'll move on to item six point eight. Discussion of possible action on purchase of a hundred KW natural gas slash liquid propane generator for the City of Castle Hill City Hall. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. And obviously, as we've discussed as part of this emergency management plan and update, the, one of the weaknesses was identified as a generator related to this building. I believe in the summary, we've, between Chief Ladwig and I, have written up an explanation of the current generator, which, you know, if we lose power, we'll still have power to dispatch and police. The problem is the generator out there is about forty years old and it's antiquated. And one of the contractors said basically if it goes down, it's unreparable. And I know that it's been, as far as I know, since I've been city manager here, the need to find a generator for the entire building in case of an emergency situation. And so I would ask Chief Ladwig if particular questions about the generator itself for this building, because he was heavily involved with these contractors and identifying this one contractor based on the particular generator that has been chosen today for council's decision.
Mayor, council, if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. We did do quite an extensive search for a contractor, sent out several requests for bids and so forth. So I feel pretty comfortable with the vendor that we've chosen to install this. Yes, council?
Could the funding be paid to the Crime Control Prevention District?
That I would have to direct towards chief. It's a little out of. No.
The police department's in this building?
Mr. Rapley, can you use the microphone, sorry?
It'd have to be a dedicated generator, a dedicated facility for the police department for the generator to support and operate for.
So I guess, Mr. Gregory, if it was just the police department, but we're looking at the whole building, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Joyce, you had a question?
Just a quick one. Chief, I noticed that you recommended a, a unit that takes two fuels. And is that just out of a fear that at some point we won't have natural gas again or?
Well, and we're, we're still in the process of devising which would be a better fuel and also the feasibility of a unit that would run off a boat. So that's just one process that we're still looking at.
Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, unless there's other questions or comments, I'd move approval of the purchase of a hundred kilowatt generator for the City of Castle Hill City Hall. A second?
Second by Mr. Gregory. Much by Mr. Isbrand, second by Mr. Gregory. Any further discussion?
Mayor, and just so everyone's aware, the idea for funding for this would come from the seed and of course it'd be a part of a budget amendment later this year.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Chief, where would the generator possibly go? Would it fit in the same footprint?
No, sir. Talking with the contractors, and this was pretty unanimous with all contractors I had discussed, it would be best placed closest to the main panel servicing the building. And all of the contractors can, agreed that it, there is room there. We would have to build a fence around it and also put up some bollards to protect it from any accidental run-ins with traffic right there. But it would be placed in that location. That would alleviate any additional cost of having to run the power all the way over to the other side of the building, all the way to have to run it back again through the transfer switch.
Thank you, chief. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And next up, we have discussion of possible action on appointments to the zoning commission. I see we still have our valedictorian there. We could probably use your help here with some of the boards and commissions. Mr. Rapley?
Mayor, as, as described in the agenda summary, the appointments that are up are the ones from this current election, that would be place two, three, and the mayor. I know that Ms. Tedford had provided a summary of whose positions are up and who and what council members can do and replace right now. Correct, Ms. Tedford?
Okay. With that being said, if everybody's prepared, I guess we'll start with Mr. Isbrand and work our way down.
Mayor, these are the appointments, seats places two and three.
Okay. Well, we'll still work that way. Mr.? Yes, sir.
Which one we doing first? Zoning, my recommendation is Todd Herman. And the reason for Todd, he's been involved in the last three or four years and more recently also as an alternative on the, on the committee. And he is, I've watched him, probably unlike, I shouldn't say this, but I watch all the zoning committees, whether it's online, I used to come here, but last year and a half been doing other things. But I still watch him online. And I like what he brings to the table. He's got some experience and I recommend Todd Herman for the position.
Okay. And just to confirm this isn't, council doesn't need to confirm it's a direct appointment, correct?
I believe so. Ms. Schnall?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Herman, welcome to the zoning commission. Mr. May?
For place three, I appoint Skip McCormick. It's a reappointment, actually.
Okay, thank you. The alternate by city council, how does that work, Mr. Rapley?
I believe anyone can nominate if it's council at large and then obviously seconded by another council member or voted on unanimously, of course, or majority, I'm sorry.
Is there anybody that would like to nominate somebody right now? If not, we can leave it open and.
Can I nominate somebody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Bueller was also, excuse me, on the committee this last time, and I think his work was exemplary. And I would like to bring him back to the committee. Zoning and Board of Adjustments are very unique and it's good to have some experience there. And I would like to have him come back.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Mr. Bueller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Perfect.
I think that's a good nomination. I originally nominated Mr. Bueller to the committee. I think he's done a good job. And he's anxious to continue working. I agree with that recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. All in favor of Mr. Bueller? Unanimous. Thank you. And I don't have anybody, if anybody is listening or in the audience that would like to participate, please feel free. We can always have some new blood, even if you want to join us even for a little bit. Move on to item six point one zero, discussion of possible action on appointments to the Architectural Review Committee. Mr. Paul?
Yes, my nomination would be Moreta Scott. Again, she was, been on one year and I'd like to see her do a full term because she's done a very good job on some of the issues we've recently had in this past year. And I think her experience is well worth it and her credentials definitely point her in the direction.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
Have a chair in us for that position.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have anybody for the at-large position? Okay. Mr. Joyce?
I was just going to suggest that we retain David Kilgore as an alternate. If there's no other open position, I think he's done a good job and ready to serve. And I'd like to see him reappointed.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Kilgore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Board of Adjustments, I'm sorry, six point one one, discussion of possible action and appointments to Board of Adjustments, Mr. Paul?
Yes, this board to me is probably even more important in that a lot of people don't realize it, but once a board of adjustment decision is made, there is no alternative. It's done, it's fini, you can't take it to council, you can't do anything. So to me, that shows that we need experience and judgment. And I, again, watch Board of Adjustments. And I would like to bring John Squire back to the Board of Adjustments.
And I would like to bring John Squire back to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to reappoint Justin Viegas for place three.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have anybody for the alternates? Mr. Gregory?
I'd continued with having Patsy Martin. I think she's enthusiastic. I think she's a good learner, and I think she has a good mind. So I'd like to have her continue her position as an alternate of Board of Adjustment.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second for Ms. Martin by Mr. Joyce. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, we'll proceed on.
Mayor, the other alternates that we have on Board of Adjustment?
Yes, sir. Do you have anybody?
Yes, I'd I'd move the reappointment of Ian Cold, Mr. Cold and his family, young family, or new to Castle Hills, very interested in being engaged in our city. He served as an alternate this last term.
Second.
Okay, we have a first for Mr. Cold about Mr. Isbrand, and a second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Next, we have six point one two, discussion and possible action on appointments to the Parks and Projects Commission. Mr. Paul?
I don't have anybody that showed that I talked to, so I'd like to pass on that one.
Okay. Mr. May?
For place three, I would like to appoint Madison Dillon. She submitted a very extensive resume. I spoke with her, confirmed her ardent desire to be on this projects and parks.
How does she spell the last name?
D I L L O N.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have anybody, Mr. Rappley?
Mr. Paul, did you want to, at some point, fill that, or have you passed on the appointment to council, just so?
I would like to, yeah, I would like to hold it and fill it if I can, because you know, I know that at the current time, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Joyce can tell me, there's not a lot of activity going on parks and recreation at the moment, or parks and projects, excuse me, at the moment. And I'm not quite sure where we are on that, and I think that we need to get people involved that would help pick it up some. And so I just don't have anybody at the moment.
So, Mr. Schnell, would that person be, who's Mr. Squire, be a holdover right now until Mr. Paul has a decision?
Yes, I think that would be the the most reasonable.
I'll go ahead and appoint Mr. Squire then, because I know he's done a good job on it, and I know he's likes it and everything. And I just didn't want to load the committees up with Mr. Squire or some of the other ones would, you know, this may not be the time to say it, but first of all, I appreciate everybody who has sent in applications and want to be involved. I'm a little disappointed that somehow or another we haven't attracted more people to get involved and more opportunities, because I know that we have so much talent in our city. And sooner or later, hopefully, they will get involved more and and do the things, because we welcome it all. And so I'm stuck with going with people who I know are strictly committed to do the best they can for the city based on experience, and as opposed to just trying to grab somebody. So I'll take Mr. Squire.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I believe I've already made the appointment.
I'm sorry, Madison, that's right. Okay. Do we have any, let's see. Okay, that is it for right now.
I think there's a, the alternate for your, the mayor.
Yeah, I'm going to hold off on that one. I haven't received an application.
Okay.
Okay, next, we have announcements by mayor and city council members on items of community interest. I know we have Mr. Herrera that joined us a little bit late that wanted to, do you have any comments, sir?
But thank you very much for our opportunity to be part of the city. We look forward to serving everybody here. We're looking forward to bring a a very fine upscale establishment to the city where it will match your residents and the city itself. All video cameras will be turned off at that time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor and Council, I'm I'm sure you join with me in the observation that Fiesta Castle Hills was an absolutely extraordinary event. It was just as great as could be. It was so needed for our community and well beyond. Likewise, with the Patriotic Pets and People Parade, and Mayor and Mr. Gregory were out there with us. And it was just a fun way to, in the course of a couple weeks, have have a couple real nice celebrations and see some return to normalcy, if you will. And I'd just like to take the opportunity to, once again, thank Judy Crawford and Norma McCollin and all the extraordinary volunteers in the Castle Hills Community Organization. Likewise, the Castle Hills Women's Club and the Garden Club. You know, these these community organizations that we have, these civic groups that we have, just do an amazing job of keeping us all together and making sure that we're entertained and watching out for each other and have so much to celebrate in this community. So I take this moment to thank all of our civic organizations for everything they do for us.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul? Mr. May?
I just have a brief update on the Castle Hills Historical Society. We're picking up more steam. We have approximately fifteen members. We have a consistent base of about six that come to meetings, and we're meeting about every other week. We have fixed on the celebration date for our founding, our seventy-seventieth anniversary. That will be on Sunday, September the twenty-sixth, and we're planning two portions. One open to the entire city. It'll be on the commons. We're thinking about food. We've already locked in one food truck. We're looking for a forum and a manner to display the things we were uncovering, photographs, literal histories of some of our more prominent citizens over the years, and artifacts. In the evening, we have locked in the veranda for a dinner event. It'll be nineteen fifties themed. Within, I think, two weeks, by the first of August, we're going to publish the event and the cost and how to retain a seat at that event. But it'll be fun, and it's going to be a showcase. So I'm I'm hopeful that we turn out.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to inform everybody that the Castle Hills Business Association is percolating along, and we're trying to gain membership. We did gain a few new members at the Fiesta there a few weeks ago, which is very nice. And we're planning an event for August nineteenth. It's a Thursday evening indoors here in the council chambers, where we're going to have a number of speakers from the community, just making very brief talks about how they survived the last year or so. So it should be very interesting. We're looking forward to it, and everybody's welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Gregory?
Okay, one thing that I want to add is, the city manager and I had an opportunity to sit down with the Assistant City Manager in San Antonio and the Director of Public Works to discuss drainage. Obviously, we're doing our part, but my message has been that we could do more together. So we got preliminary approval to do modeling to determine what kind of solutions would provide what kind of results. So basically, we're going to be working with San Antonio River Authority to put together some models to simulate the drainage improvements that could be done and what they would end up providing as far as a result. While it's not technically the answer that we need, it's a step that we haven't been able to make and as long as we've been dealing with drainage issues. So I'm incredibly proud that this is a light that we can begin to see towards the end of the tunnel and in addition to the work that we're doing ourselves. So thank you, Mr. Rappley, for getting that set up, and I'm hopeful that we can start making some more progress. And to all my colleagues' points, I enjoyed all the activities that transpired over the last couple, I guess, months now. It was nice to see us slowly recovering from the pandemic. That being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
First, by Mr. May, a second by Mr. Joyce on favor. Okay, it's seven thirty-one. Meeting is adjourned. I think Mr. Rappley has a couple.
I'll just, just reminder of the budget workshop on Thursday night. Thank you.